Good evening, everyone. It's spring break, but we still have some dedicated folks here. And obviously have a meeting. And we'll go through here. So let's see, we have a quorum. We're missing one person. Brad Zill called me this morning, so we'll just go on without him. So let's see, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, message from the chair. Let's see, where's my...oh, right there. So anyway, remember our goals. We want to say, make NIC flourish again and resolve NWCCU issues. It's only been about two weeks since the last meeting, so there's not a lot to report. We've been working on what needs to be done for accreditation, both a checklist and some ideas. I've been doing a bunch of research to how to get the...to actually achieve the task we have. I've cross-checked my list against the concerns of the constituent groups, that what they have expressed, and it looks like we'll be addressing all of the things that they talked about last fall. So if someone could let them know that we're...I've got that on the list and we're working it. Okay, and then you've given...President Swain has given me a list, also Dr. Kurtz, and so I'm going to mold all that in together and make sure we've got everything covered, and then we'll prioritize it and crank it out.
You're good.
The legislature...what? Okay. The legislature will be finished next week. I've been monitoring what they're doing, and we won't have to deal with that shortly. They're kind of winding down. There's lots of places out there on their agenda where they say that they don't have anything on the meetings. On another topic, we want to work on our processes again tonight. The last meeting was fairly good, but we need...still need to improve. Specifically, let's try to be very polite and not attack any person in the meeting, and we just not...and we need to not talk over each other. Specifically, as chairman, I own the floor. We did quite a bit better last time. And need to have trustees hold their hand up when they want the floor. I'll acknowledge them, give them the floor, then I get it back. And this will prevent people from talking over each other. I'm seeing improvement, meeting by meeting on this, so that's good. We'll just keep going. And by the way, the thing we said before, for making a motion, just a reminder, say just say, "I move that and make the motion." Okay? So that's that. Let's see. So next item is celebrating success. Dr. Swain, that's your...
Sure. Normally, we have...we try to have students to celebrate students. This being spring break, not a lot of students. And we do have the opportunity to recognize the Wind Symphony recently held their 50th anniversary concert. So that's a pretty big deal. A town as small as Coeur d'Alene having a symphony, the theater program, and all the performing arts that we host here. And so with that, we're going to have Terry Jones talk about the 50th anniversary concert.
Good evening. My name is Terry Jones, and I am the present and the past director of the Wind Symphony here on campus. And we're going to talk a little bit about the 50 years of the Wind Symphony. Tonight, I brought a couple of people with me. In particular, we're very extremely fortunate that we have one of members of the Wind Symphony has been there for all 50 years, and I want to recognize Linda Barnett. Linda, you can stand up. 50 years, she's...
Very cool.
What instrument?
Saxophone. She's a saxophone. And actually, she'll probably get mad at me, but she actually met her husband in the Wind Symphony some years ago. To start out with, I thought I would also ask, again, as mentioned, this is spring break, so we couldn't...the students are...when I approached them, "What? Come during spring break?" I don't think so. But the Wind Symphony is a group that uses high school students, college students, and community members. And so I have one of our community members with me tonight. Teresa DeWitt's lived in our community for 25 years. She's been with the band for 20. She's a published author. She runs marathons, and then her day job is that she's an airline stewardess. Teresa wanted to share a couple of words with you.
So I'm going to tell you a little story about how it starts as a musician. I was an 11-year-old pimply sixth grader, and I'd been playing flute for a year. I didn't want to do it anymore. It was hard. Band wasn't cool. I wanted to quit. So my mom, Christmas time, she gives me this flexible metal stand, and I'm like, well, I can't quit now. So that was probably the best gift I ever received. And I'd be...I'd hazard to say that the Wind Symphony here at NIC has been the second biggest gift of my life. 20 years with the Wind Symphony. I've grown incredibly as a musician. And as you heard Terry say earlier, I have a really busy life. I travel extensively where work. I've achieved a lot of really cool things, exciting things, but I always manage to work my schedule around Wednesday night rehearsals because I love this band. I asked my husband what he liked most about band, and he said, oh, well, his first response is like, well, that you're not here on Wednesdays. Well, yeah, besides that. He actually said that it's because it's one of the only places left that we have free arts. We have the music. We've got the choir. We've got the theater. This is such a gift to our community, and it extends further. It's a...they're a part...the arts are an important part of our community. But after the concerts, my friends rave about it. And these people, it would be hard pressed to get them if they were being charged to attend. So having this as a benefit to our community is huge, and it reaches further. You know, we have the live streaming now. So if we have friends' family that can't make it, or even people in the community who can't...they can watch it live. And that brings our extent of what's going on here in North Idaho a lot further than just here in Coeur d'Alene. I'm...you know, and I'm happy, too. They've recently instituted a $30 a semester fee. I'm happy to pay that, to be part of this and to support this group. You know, I've been in a lot of bands over the years. NIC is different. Usually, you go into band, you sit there, you play your music, you leave. You never get to know the musician sitting next to you. You don't get to know the conductor. NIC, Terry and Brian that came for a few years, they have set this amazing sense of community that we have within the band. And it's not just in my section. Terry's...and they've fostered this acceptance and encouragement, no matter what your playing ability is. And I encourage you, too. If anybody out here is a musician, come join us. Come as you are, right where you're at. Come play with us. We have a seat for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as long as I'm here, and for those of you who know me, you might be questioning, isn't this the guy who chose a career that doesn't use words? So I have to get him out when I have a chance. Usually, I'm just waving my arms. I think one of the things that Teresa said, I really want to emphasize, that it's really a community group. And in a lot of ways, I think it is the perfect community college group, our community college anything. We have students this year, I think I have about 14 high school students from the area. We have working agreements with those band programs, trying to...you know, the kids can't play at the college if they're not being in their high school program, so we have about 14 of them. This year, we also have about 14 or 15 enrolled college students, and then another 35 or 40 community people who take advantage of that fee that they help us out with. And it's interesting because they come from a variety of ways of life. I mean, I've always contended that we couldn't pay for the number of tutors that I have sitting next to our college kids every week that do that in the jazz band or the band or the Wind Symphony. And just a couple of quick little stories about the community. I think Teresa alluded to this community that the band produces. It really is that. I know, I remember several years ago at a Christmas concert, one of the choir members actually passed out in the hallway, and there was Dr. Pete, one of our trumpet players, took care of him until the medics got there. Interestingly enough, I find that was great enough as it was. But then if you ask people who end up in the hospital, one of our nurse students or one of our players who was a nurse will check on him. Pete checks on him. Again, it's community. And what they realize is that the success of that group depends on...I think I've got 63 right now. The success of that 60 people. And all it takes is one bad apple to spoil the whole bunch. And so there's this great camaraderie. And, you know, I have, again, 15 and 16-year-olds in the band, and I think I have three 80-plus-year-olds in the band. And I don't know of another activity that you can get the same kind of contribution from a 15- or a 16-year-old that you can from an 82- or 83-year-old. And they're both important. And as a result, then, we have these people from the community, so the music department then reaches in our community. Those people are great ambassadors for NIC. They go out and they talk to people. I've contended a long time, and I could go on, you know, all night about the stories, especially after the Christmas concert. The Wind Symphony splits the Christmas concert with the Cardinal Corral. And how many times people have come up and said, you know, I have, you know, five kids, and we couldn't afford to go to a regular Christmas concert, but NIC provides us that special night in the Christmas season because we don't charge for those concerts. And it's just a wonderful thing that they do. And, you know, the music department is...also reaches out in both directions. Like I say, we work a lot with our K-12 partners. We host, along with the auditorium staff. We host five days of...just got finished last week, five days of high school music festivals here, probably...oh, I don't know. I can do simple math, probably 15 or 16 groups a day and 25 or 30 kids in each group over five days. Then the music department also then does a jazz festival. This year, we had 15 bands in for a big concert. We hold a middle school festival. We had about 300...about 275 kids at that or so. So we bring kids on campus. If you talk to a lot of students who may not even be in music anymore, what was their first experience of NIC? It was a music event. And I appreciate, for those of you who don't know me, I was here for a long time, 33 years, and then I retired and, you know, and got asked to help out with this year. And I've always appreciated the support that we've gotten from the college in terms of supporting the band and allowing the band to be the quality that it is because it's...you know, Teresa says we invite everybody in, and you can, you know, again, go to and watch. The quality is really good, and, you know, that idea of always seeking for the highest quality we can happens that way. And part of it has to do with this camaraderie. When I've got guys in the band that have played for 60 years looking to a 15-year-old and saying, hey, look, you should really be doing it this way, that doesn't happen anyplace else. And we also...it's an interesting place if you go into, whether you're looking at age differences or, you know, political differences or whatever, everybody comes together. It doesn't matter when you're playing, you know, second clarinet, what all that...all that doesn't...all that goes away because you have to play your part to contribute to the whole. And as was mentioned, this is our 50th year. The band's been around for that long and an average of five or six concerts a year. And, you know, I...I'll tell you a quick story, and then I'll get out of the way here. I was judging a contest with the Wind Symphony director from WSU. His name's Dan Pham, is now conducting this, or the Coeur d'Alene Symphony. Bob Spitalis from Gonzaga, one of my former students, Jim Smart, Dr. Jim Smart's at University of Montana, and we're talking about band music. And at that point in time, they're really heavily into contemporary band music. And that's great for the universities. So anyhow, I...at that point in time, my next concert, Jim, my student, asked me and he said, so what are you playing this next concert? I said, well, we're doing an all John Williams concert. And you could kind of see them all roll their eyes like, wow, okay, you know, good. So I judged with them after the concert and was asked, so how did the concert go? And I said, oh, pretty good. You know, we had a little over 1,000 people. And you could look at their faces, that they couldn't comprehend playing to over 1,000 people with a band concert. You know, I remember one year, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago, we averaged over 1,000 people at every concert. Last spring, Brian and Max Mendez, Brian Henneford and Max Mendez, for the Mother's Day concert, I'll bet they had 200...2,000 people there. The park was packed. So I think it's a really great outreach for the college to be able, as Teresa said, to put out a good product and reach into the community. One of the reasons that after retiring, I came back was that I thought, you know, we can do some positive things with the band. And not that they had been done, but I think the band and the music program, the drama department, all do positive things. And before I do leave, I also want to mention that part of our ability to put on great performances is we have the most unbelievable auditorium staff. Those guys just...well, go look at their...if you go into their office and they have a calendar up and look at that, it's always packed. A good example was, we had our 50th year anniversary concert last Wednesday, starting at 7:00 in the morning and until 6:00, which was the time the Wind Symphony was going to warm up, they had the district large group choir contest there. And those guys just keep going and keep going and keep doing that. So come by and hang out with us. It's a pretty good bunch of folks. I think we do a really good job of being what I think everything here should be, this good collaboration of making great art from all avenues of life. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. The one thing that really...the one thing that really impresses me when I see these guys is there's at least four generations. I mean, he talked about that, but you realize when you see them, there are four generations up there on the stage playing music together, and I think that's a really impressive occurrence. Rarely do we get in America four generations working together on a project, and I think that's great.
Cool. So the next step is constituent reports. Three of the folks aren't here, and I've got a note here that says that information will be put into the packet, and it'll be put out on the web for next time.
Correct.
But Matt Byczarski, want to come and speak to us?
Are we going to get a copy of their written reports at this meeting?
Yeah, they should be...we'll have them. We'll have them.
But not at this?
Not right now, no.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Excuse me. Good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, and President Swain. This will be a nice short one. So on Thursday, March 14th, 2024, staff assembly met and addressed the following items. We discussed that staff assembly chair nominations will be taking place next month, so my term's up, I think it's June, somewhere in there. So we're going to start the process in April and see who replaces me. We also, Gustaf filling staff positions on the college-wide committees for the next academic year. And then we had a great presentation from Amy Bardwell in the American Indian Heritage Center and from Louisa Rogers with the Center of New Directions. That kind of summed up our meeting. Do you have any questions?
This may be a very short meeting tonight. That's fine, I think, as long as we cover everything.
I want to say thank you for making a point to still be here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, next, we have the president's report from President Swain.
Right. So we have a...had a couple of really...we're getting some really good coverage in the press, not just in the Coeur d'Alene press, but elsewhere. I do want to highlight, there's a couple of articles about, really not about North Idaho College, per se, but about a couple of our former students that have participated in a variety of business and entrepreneurial programs that helped them get their business launched. And so that's in the North Idaho Business Journal. And then programs about the golden anniversary of the symphony. I'll talk more about this later, but the community conversation that we had, the community forum that we had on the 21st was covered both before and after, so that was pretty nice. And then our NIC Detention Academy, we had another graduation, graduated six students. It was a...for only six students, it was a pretty full house. The families that show up for those graduations and the law enforcement community that shows out, shows up is really pretty impressive. So nice, nice coverage there. And of course, you'll hear more from Sean later, but our spring athlete...or sorry, winter athletics programs turned out really well. Nice article about our wrestling team and the basketball team that made it to the final four again. So really, really some nice, nice coverage there. I'll start off with then in my report accreditation. We did get the report on NWCCU on the 1st of March. This time, it came with a report and a plan of action. Both of those are up on the web, so if you want to look at those, they are available. We are currently now looking at the NWCCU and federal regulations that are required to meet the teach-out agreements that we were required to do. And I just want to emphasize that while we are asked to do teach-out agreements, we are not in teach-out...this is not a threat of teach-out. This is their notice that you guys are kind of making really slow progress here, and so if you continue to make slow progress, then in January 2025, when we go to the hearing, it's possible that we would be put into teach-out. So they're just trying to make sure that we're ready with our plan if that's necessary. The April visit and the June meeting of the full commission for us have been canceled. So we're back to a normal mid-cycle review in November. That was also postponed until 2025. However, in trying to make sure that we're ahead of the data and making sure that we're doing all the right things in preparation for that mid-cycle review, we're going to go ahead and plan as if we are going to do it in the...for the October visit so that we can make sure that we have all that data and, you know, otherwise, you end up waiting until the spring of 2025 and it's due, and you say, man, if we checked that data, we would have been able to make changes. So we're starting that now. They have actually scheduled the October visit. It's going to be October 14th and 15th. And again, we'll have probably four or five folks from NWCCU here on campus for a couple of days to look at the...talk to people, look at the report, and try to triangulate what was said in the report with what they see on the ground. Shifting a little bit to a different accreditation topic is our...the North Idaho College Children's Center was just recently accredited by the National Association for Education of Young Children, and they've been accredited for over 20 years. They just got reaccredited in March, and the report came out...it wasn't just like they passed. They passed with glowing, like 90% ratings in every area. It's a very vigorous standard, and only about 10% of childcare facilities across the country are accredited nationally. So it is a...it's a pretty high standard to meet, and they have done it now for 20 years and are getting glowing reviews. So hats off to the folks in the young children's program for all the work that they do to make that happen. Then the final thing under accreditation, the Head Start program is going through their reaffirmation of their grant. It was approved last time that we would go forward with that, and they're conducting necessary or required governance training on Friday, April 19th, from 8:45 in the morning until 2:30 in the afternoon at the Harding Family Center on 15th Street. The board is invited. The public is invited if you want to attend and watch that. The Head Start program is, again, one of those programs that serves the broader community of Northern Idaho very well. Jumping to enrollment management, recruiting, again, some good news for us. All of the areas where we are pulling in new students, which has been the focus of our recruiting efforts, pulling in new students, all those numbers are up. We'll get a final snapshot of that at the April meeting. The census date was the 15th of March, but by the time they clean all the data up, it takes a little while. So we'll have that ready for you at the April meeting. But for the first time in about 10 years, all of the new student categories were up, and so we're continuing our work on recruiting and now work on retention as well. Part of what has enabled this work to happen is we built some data dashboards that gives us near real time. Usually, at the end of every day, we get a data dump that fills up the dashboard so we can see where we are in every category. We started that this year, but what we didn't have is really being able to dial down into or dig into the data and get into specific categories. So we had the transfer program, so folks that were getting a traditional associate's degree, we had folks getting CTE, we had dual credit, we had continuing students, but we weren't able to dial into...dive into those subcategories. So we're adding those to the new dashboards, and we're going to be able to track that data much closer and be able to respond much quicker to things where we see success and things where we need to do extra work. So that's, I think, going to make a big difference for fall. And you see on your...on the desks of all of the trustees up here, we had our inaugural bus tour. We had been doing road shows, taking things out on the road and going to the different high schools, but we really wanted to have students come on campus and see the campus. And so they...about just five weeks ago, they came up with the idea of having bus tours and bringing the local high schools in here. We invited 19 high schools, or we invited 20 high schools, 19 said they would come. We had about 40...450 students over the 19th and the 20th stopped by. They got to visit the Parker Center. They got to come here on main campus. They got a great tour of the new medical arts facility and our rec center, which are incredible, state-of-the-art. The dental hygiene facility, they got to talk to faculty. They had this room set up as kind of a college fair day, so they got to go around and talk to all the different departments that were here. And they got to talk to our guidance counselors who helped them with filling out their applications for Idaho Launch and FAFSA and all those kinds of things. So provided board members with the T-shirt, which is kind of cool. Somebody got a T-shirt they can hold up? It's a...it's a pretty cool, kind of retro-looking T-shirt. We've got a lot of positive feedback from that, so hopefully folks wear it instead of wash their car with it. But that, and then they got the string bags to carry around, and it's kind of cool when you see the students carrying around the string bags because you all know that that's a group of potential students. And everybody on campus knows that we need...we're working on a recruiting. So they are very responsive, ask questions, very friendly. They always are, but they now know that these are potential students, and so they respond accordingly. With the Idaho Launch program and the NIC Foundation making an early contribution of $1.1 million in scholarships, our financial aid office is going to be really well-prepared to start working with these students as they start applying. And hopefully, we typically get about 650 new students every year, and hopefully with Idaho Launch and the Foundation providing scholarships and all the other work that we're doing, we'll see that number jump for the fall.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Or have you finished?
No, no, no. I got more.
Oh, okay. So you and I remember had a discussion about a friend of mine who, in the past, she had a bunch of kids, and she came up here, and then she was concerned about NIC, and they weren't sending their kids here. And then she told me two weeks ago, oh, yes, my daughter is starting at NIC in the fall, and I'm very happy about that.
Great. Well, I...
So we're making progress, it sounds like.
We're doing our best to make sure that every student that shows up is well-educated and treated fairly. So in community stakeholder engagement, on the...we started our first community forum on March 21st. I worked with myself and a bunch of the cabinet members, worked with the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce and the Kootenay Health to sponsor this first Health of the Community Forum. We talked about partnerships, innovation, collaboration, how we could work together to grow the workforce. For those folks that haven't been paying attention, you know, there's a help-wanted sign up in just about every business around. And so we have to be really efficient about preparing our workforce and let, you know, nobody slips through the crack unless they want to. And so we're doing everything we can to let people know the courses we have to offer, remove those barriers of finances and access, and making sure that everybody has that opportunity. And so that was...the focus of that first event was to talk about those issues. It was really well-attended, 75 people on a Thursday afternoon from, I think, from 3:30 to 5:30. from, I think from 3:30 to 5:30 was, was a pretty nice event. We got to hear from Jamie Smith, the new CEO of Kootenay Health and, and several others. So, it was, it was a nice event. And then, last week, several constituent leaders and I, the, the folks that aren't here tonight and, and Matt, we met with, we were invited by some religious leaders from the community to meet with them and talk about how the religious community could support the NIC community. So, we met over at the old Fort Sherman Chapel. I'm not sure if that's the official name of it, but we, we would call it the old post chapel if, if military. So, we met there. There were, again, about 13 local church representatives and we had four or five folks there from the constituent groups. And just to hear what they could offer and hear from us what, what they thought employees and students might need. So, there was a nice dialogue. It's, it's not opening the university or the college to them. It's, it's finding out what they can do. And then, they've offered to open the, the chapel up a, a couple of days a month so that if somebody wants to go over there, they can do that. And I, I think that's a, a real good service. And we'll get, kind of get information about that out and, and how that might work. So, really good. It's not using any of the college resources and it's utilizing the community resources to provide support to the NIC community. Upcoming events that are listed should be on the slide behind me some, at some point. There's the Week of the Young Child, April 6th through 12th. There'll be an art show, book fair, family dinner and a dance here in the sub. And I'll be reading a favorite children's book to kids on Monday, the 8th. We'll see how that goes. Hopefully, there are a lot of pictures. In, in terms of workforce training program and, and getting that back under line, online, we're, well, they're, they're actually doing great. 20% growth year-over-year for the last two years. So, we're, they're, they're doing great things. I'm happy to announce that the gunsmithing course that we just started was completely filled with 20 students, maxed out. So, we're, obviously that hit the right mark, if you will.
All right.
We were on target with that one.
Oh, my goodness.
But it was, so it was, it was good. I mean, that's the kind of thing that we're trying to do, especially with the Workforce Training Center, is, is find those niche programs where we can quickly spin things up and provide a service to the community that they need. And so, you know, sometimes they fizzle, sometimes they're, they're great. And this one, you know, with as many gun shops as we have around town, you'd think that this would be good and it was. So, I, I give a lot of credit to the folks at Workforce Training Center for putting that together and getting the word out. And then, on March 8th, we celebrate the latest of our Detention Academy with six new officers. Again, room is full. Very moving ceremony when those folks walk across the stage. And then, the new Workforce Training Center Summer Catalog is out and it should be available in your mailboxes this week. And, and this, I mean, they, they've done a great job on this one. I, I haven't seen them in the past, but this, this covers, it highlights all the, all the programs that we're going to be offering this summer. And it highlights some of the things that are really unique to NIC and Courtland. A lot of outdoors activities, sailing, fishing. You can get licensed in just about any kind of outdoor endeavor through the, the Workforce Training Center's outdoor leadership programs. That's, that's a great thing. In terms of CTE and program alignment, the, again, the North Idaho Business Journal recently highlighted these two students who worked through our business and entrepreneurship programs that, that helped get students get a, a start in their business. Both the students are, are working. One of them started their own business, I think, up in Sandpoint. So, nice, nice article cover, and good coverage there. We're putting the final touches on the, the equipment installation of those seven CTE grants. Remember, we got $1.3 million to get that all, that all installed. And I, I think there are a couple of things that are going to be on this, on the main campus. One is an expansion of our medical simulations lab, which is just incredible. I mean, if you can look at the pictures, there's a, a couple of pictures that, that, the one up on the screen there. And, and if, if it weren't for lack of blood, it would, you'd think it was a real surgery. And so, maybe we need to add some red stuff or something, I don't know, to make it real. But really incredible. And when you go in there and mess with the equipment, it is absolutely realistic. I mean, if you, if you take the mask off, you're surprised that there's not a patient in front of you. It, it is really an incredible advance in technology. And then, the other thing we've got on main campus is our graphic design program has expanded into the, the building that's at the, behind the goal on the south side of the soccer field. Phenomenal. They've got 3D printers and, and some very interactive video wall that is going to take them up a notch. Probably, including four years, will be the best graphic design program in the Northwest. Really, and they've, they've already had the teaching experience for that and our students are going on to great things. But stepping them up in terms of equipment is going to really take them to the next level. So, I'm really happy to see that. We also got a new semi so we can expand the commercial driver's license program and electric vehicles so the students can learn how to repair those things. So, some really good stuff. Vicky Isaacson, we're going to get, get out and get some pictures of all that stuff. And Vicky Isaacson will give you a presentation on that next, in, in April. In terms of transfer program alignment, we're working on several projects. We have a presentation this past week by a company that can help us with standardizing class start times, evaluating course loads, adjusting course schedules to better meet the needs of students and programs, and helping us balance and, and adjust the number of courses that we offer so that we don't have a bunch of half-filled courses. So, it's going to, it's, it, if, I mean, that's just one tool. But we're trying to align both our systems and the software tools available so that we're much more efficient in our delivery of services to students. And, and our strategic plan is, is also taking that into account and helping us guide with that effort. In terms of support for student athletes, Sean Noel is going to provide an update on winter sports and maybe a foreshadowing of what's happening with spring sports. So, I'm not going to address those too much. But I will give a shout-out to the student athletes who all just did a remarkable job. Again, this is our, our wrestling team has always been in NJCAA, but our first time, our basketball, men's and women's basketball team have been in NJCAA for a long time. Men's team made it to the, the playoff. And, and I'll let Sean finish that. Otherwise, I'm going to take all of his thunder and he'll be mad at me later. Sean and I did attend a meeting of all the SWAC presidents and athletic directors on, down in Salt Lake City on March 15th. And we are confirmed to begin competition in SWAC with all of our athletic programs for 2425. SWAC is still really working with the NJCAA to realign some of the, the regions and districts in the West. It's, the NJCAA is heavily controlled by the athletic directors, mainly on the east side of the United States, where the community colleges are really close to each other. And so, they make rules that really work well for them, but they don't work well for, you know, for us where our closest competitor is, you know, a two-day drive away. So, we're, we're trying to figure out how to, how to manage all that better. Some of that stuff doesn't help us because we're kind of the geographic outlier. But some of the things they're talking about doing is having a, a series of mini tournaments. You could have three or four teams that would meet at one location and we'd play a series of, of games over a two or three-day period. So, we could knock all those out and save some travel time. So, those are the kind of things we're working on, trying to figure out how to do that. In terms of then jumping to academic freedom and free speech, faculty continue to work on and create a new college policy on academic freedom and free speech. That work continues. It's, it's something they're very interested in. And as a result of their interest and dedication to it, it does take time to work through those issues. And the, the second item, I've, I've reviewed another draft as, as part of it, is the new course evaluation policy. It's, again, a big change for how faculty have done things in the past. So, it, when you, when you work with them on a, on a collaborative governance, you have to give them time to work through those issues. So, they're doing it. I, they keep sending me things. We keep going back and forth. But that's, that's in the works. We are, we are hosting a, a session called NIC Listens. This is, there are several of these around the state. There was a Courtland Listens, Boise Listens. This is an NIC Listens event on April 17th here in the Student Union Building. And the purpose of that is to really practice free speech and civil discourse. So, we'll see how that goes. It, it's, should be a, a good event, well-planned and orchestrated. Strategic planning, we, we met with the Strategic Planning Committee and our consultants on March 12th. They provided an update on the themes that were emerging from their listening sessions where they've been listening to all the different constituency groups on campus and off campus. And our next meeting with the consultants should be, should result in a summary of those big ideas and a two-day goal-setting session. In terms of general updates, this is the final topic. The facilities are taking, the Facilities Department and Matt is, has a big role in this, taking advantage of spring break to get a bunch of projects completed. So, McLean Hall, which is the home of our outdoor, outdoor programs, they got new windows that actually seal. So, now they have to go outdoors to see the outdoors. Used to be that, that there was plenty of outdoors indoors. When it rained, it rained indoors as well. So, they've got all that fixed already. New water heaters are going in the basement of Meyer Health Science. We've got some new air conditioning units going in. They're painting Boswell Hall and getting ready to replace the windows in Boswell Hall. And if you notice as you drove in, they're replacing the aggregate in front of the library, which was a real hazard for folks that have walking or mobility issues. And so, they're, that's all getting replaced this week. The, and, and to answer some questions that have come up recently, the first draft of our revised equal opportunity policy was, is complete and has been reviewed by the President's Cabinet. And now, it's being referred to the Senate for their review and they'll take that up for first read in April. And the security audit that we promised in November, I have a signed letter from the guy that was supposed to have it done in November. It's still not complete. So, we're, we're working with him to try to get him to get that done. But we're also taking measures to, to hire a consultant, maybe, maybe do both. So, subject your questions. That is my report.
Does anybody have any questions for President Swain?
Yeah. What, what policy was referred to the Senate just now?
The, the, the 302, 30201. The, it was equal opportunity and affirmative action. And so, that is now under.
And that came back from the Senate already?
No, no, no. We, the, it was, it was given to our HR department to staff and research and craft the, the draft new policy. The PC, she brought it to PC. We have reviewed it and now are referring it to the Senate for their review. That's the way the process is supposed to work.
So, I guess, how long did HR work on it then?
Hmm, probably six weeks. It's not their only job.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any further questions?
I have more, Chair.
Go ahead.
The Myers Health Science is getting new water heaters. That's the building just over here that was renovated just a couple of years ago.
Yeah, but they didn't replace the water heaters. So, they're, the water, the water heaters are apparently original.
All right.
Matt can give you more information on that, I suppose.
The water heaters were in the old, old part of Meyer. And then, when we get the new addition, all that's new was going to be old system, that's from the original.
Do I have to upgrade them and put new stuff?
D E W projects that are some of the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would just like to give praise to the Children's Center. The accreditation sounds like it was a tremendous feat and accomplished a job well done.
Thanks.
Sounds like the school is very busy. Lot of good things going on.
Yep.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I just have a comment.
Trustees Zimmerman?
Thank you. I don't know if you recall, I was very excited to hear about the bus tour and I'm just elated to hear it was such a success. Brings a huge smile to my face and I hope that you continue to do it. It's very good.
Everybody was pretty happy with it, yeah.
Okay, anything else? If no questions, we go to information items, which is still President Swain, I think.
Really, not, not a whole lot of update. I, I had heard, we had, we had heard that, now keep in mind that the legislature is still in session. So, some things are, are subject to change right up until the last moment. But we, we had heard that the, the driving course out at, that we were proposing to build for first responders out at the Parker Center was not funded. I got a, I got a text message from Jordan Redman earlier today and he confirmed that it's, it's not going to get funded. So, that, that kind of sets up, sets the stage for what are we going to do next. It, it is a really much-needed resource, particularly given that the, it looks like the, the airport is going to not allow them to use the airport for driving train. So, that, that creates a, a real cost for our local law enforcement because they, the, the driving course is a requirement for, for their, them to pass. So, if they can't use the, the airport runway, they'll have to go to Meridian for that. And so, that's a, that's a huge cost for them. So, they wouldn't have been able to use it this year anyway. Would, it would take at least a year to get it built. But now, now that's kind of behind times. We got, and Sarah will give you some update on the, on the numbers that we are getting from them on, in terms of the, the budget numbers, when she does her, her report on the budget. Yeah, that's-
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on the-
Sure.
On the post-academy, what it, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, you may have, have new information. But basically, it came down to they didn't have the $12 million. In other words, it's not an issue as to whether this is a really good idea and whether it can be justified from a cost-saving standpoint, et cetera. That's, that's not a problem. The issue is the revenue at the state is off 3% and they have to cut some points. So, they got their-
I, I think Jordan did a, a good job of advocating for us and-
Did he?
Probably the other legislators as well.
Okay, good.
I got the next one too?
Yep.
Winter sports.
You've got the next one.
Sean's, Sean's going to come up and talk about winter sports.
Good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain. Hope everyone is well this evening. Just wanted to give you an update on our winter and spring athletic teams. Thank you, President Swain, for your update. You covered, yeah, you covered important stuff and thank you for saving, saving some for me. So, men's basketball. Again, like Dr. Swain said, we're back in the NJCAA. So, our winter sports, basketball, men's, basketball, women's and wrestling, who's been in it. Men had a 20-win season. They qualified for postseason in their first season back. And they fell in the quarterfinal game to Salt Lake, who was the eventual champion. Went on to districts and won that. And they went on to the national tournament. So, I guess if you have to lose to somebody, you might as well lose to the best team in the tournament, right? Not that you want to lose.
I'm, I'm hearing the championship play just came earlier then.
Yeah, right, exactly. Had three student athletes named to the all SWAC and the all-region team, which is a good feat. And the CSI rivalry was, was here. It was good. It was alive and well. If you were there, just a real fun atmosphere that I hope we can continue at all our games. Yeah, it was good to see. Sat next to the AD at CSI for a while. He was excited as well to see the, the rivalry. He was excited and traveled. And he said it was good to be back. So, hopefully that'll continue for that game, but also for all the other games. Women's basketball had an eight-win season. They had one student athlete named to the all SWAC, all-region team. That was Addie Kiefer, who's a local girl, who was named to that. So, that's tremendous. Women's basketball had a good mix of local and international players. So, if you had a chance to see women's basketball, we had some local players. We had some international players. So, they were a fun group to watch this year. Men's wrestling won the region district championship. In some sports, the region and the district championship is the same. Wrestling is one of those sports. It's the first time they've done that in 11 years. So, it was- It's the first time they've done that in 11 years. So it was great to see that come back here to win that. They finished the season in sixth place at the national tournament and had six All-Americans. At those weight classes listed, 125, 149, 157, 174, 184 and 197. So they had a, a good season as a team and they had some individuals that had a great season as well. Dr. Swain, thank you for, for coming out and supporting. It was much appreciated. Men's and women's golf. So we'll move on to spring, right? We're trying to get it started, right? We're trying to get spring started. Teased us a little last week. Men's and women's golf did compete. Well, Lamont Valley Cup, men finished fifth, women finished fourth. So it was a good early start to the season. Conditions weren't ideal, but they played. And their next match will be in about two weeks for golf. Each team is looking to win an NWA championship this year. The championship is May 19th and 20 in Yakima. Men are looking to continue their run as champion. And I think the women have a real strong chance as well to, to take home a championship this year. So they're, they'll be fun to watch. And softball. Softball, believe it or not, they've played softball. Just hasn't been here yet. They're currently 15-2 on the season. The home opener is Friday, April 5th against Wenatchee Valley. So come on out and support over at Memorial Stadium. And they're currently, currently ranked number two in the latest NWA poll. We're due for a new one here at any point. So, you know, you don't want to jinx anybody, right? But talking to Shay, the coach, she feels good about this team. So they're off definitely to a good start. And then some community involvement. We had our teams, men's soccer, women's soccer, women's volleyball and wrestling. Walked in the St. Patrick's Day Parade downtown Cortlande. So that was nice to get out and, and see the, the families and kids. That's always good to see. We hosted the Idaho High School All-Star Basketball Game. So that brought some people to campus. It's always a good event. And then women's basketball did clinics on two Tuesdays in mid-March, just a couple of weeks ago at Bryant Elementary School. I had, I had some better pictures of the kids, but I'm careful with kids because they don't know, you know, with faces and things what you should or shouldn't. So, so I just showed the, the team there. But, so good things. I do want to thank marketing, facilities, the IT team, because these are all people behind the scenes that help us be successful. And again, I can't thank them enough for what they do because without them, we wouldn't be what we are. So I really appreciate that. So with that, that concludes the report. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Sean, hang on.
Transition to NJCAA, all the, this is, sounds like their last year in NWA going out big, headed towards championships and that's going well?
Yeah, I think it's going well, yeah. Obviously basketball made the transition this year. So, you know, we have some growing pains, you know? I think we do have some things to figure out that we're, that we're doing. But yeah, we're excited to start in the fall with all of our teams. The coaches are out recruiting. Trying to find the, the, the best players that, that fit what we need here. So we're excited for sure. Absolutely.
Anything further?
Yeah, the allotment of scholarships and everything is being executed well for upcoming year?
Yeah, we're, we're good for this upcoming year. I think Sarah will give an update in her report. I think it's coming up next. I don't know without seeing the agenda. But yeah, I think we're, we're on the right track for next year for sure.
Eighty kids signed, is that?
Yeah, we got about eighty kids signed roughly, yep, for next year, yep. To the, to the, you know, the full scholarship. Again, Sarah will, I think, go over the numbers specifically, but.
Is the full amount that the budget that the board of trustees allotted for the sports and scholarships going to be executed?
Yes. From what I understand, it is. Again, Sarah will, I think, put it up there. I think when you see the numbers, I think when she spells it out for next year, I'll say yes. I think it's where we need to be, so.
Yeah, they get, they get full scholarships. It's not based on dollars. They get full scholarships.
So they get, you know, each team gets tuition fees, room, board, books, that travel cost. So we have that for, for each of our teams.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so Sarah is up. Last year we had some things happen at the last minute because somehow the budget assumptions or something weren't laid out ahead of time. And so Sarah has come up with a new process. Is my understanding and is explaining it to everybody months ahead.
Returning to the old process.
Is that returning to the old process? Okay, I stand corrected. But anyway, we're happy about it.
We're here, yep.
We're here, yeah. Let's go.
So, good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain, colleagues and guests. Tonight, we're going to kick off our FY25 budget process by talking about the assumptions. We have talked about the assumptions every year, but just not in a formal way, quite this formally. So we're just, we're really just going to spell it out this year and make sure it's super clear for everyone. So as part of our annual budget process, the administration develops and shares guidelines and assumptions and planning principles so that we can establish a common understanding from which the institution and all the budget managers can formulate our proposed budget that we will bring to you next month. The budget process emphasizes fiscal responsibility and stewardship through effective management of existing resources, increased operational efficiencies, strategic investment in the future. As a note, when we talk about strategic investment in the future, that next year, when we do our budget process, we'll, we will have that fully executed strategic plan with all of the specific goals and objectives. And we will be using that as a, as a main feeder into the budget process. But that won't be, we won't be able to do that for this year.
Can, can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
And what exactly will be available in April?
In April, they will be the overarching goals. So the, the large picture goals of where we want to go into the future. And then after those have been approved, we will work on the objectives and the measures to accomplish those goals.
So a typical goal would be, we want to expand Parker Center or we want to have a new welding program or something like that?
Those are actually strategies to accomplish the goals. The goals will be much broader where we want to provide additional access to, clearer pathways for our students in their educational journey.
So it's 50,000-foot view? And then when you get to strategies, when will the strategies be done?
They'll be developed. As soon as we approve the overarching goals, we'll start working on the strategies.
Do we have a target date though?
I think it's beginning of this fall semester.
Okay. So then you, then you down to the 35,000-foot view and then, yeah, okay, I get it. So you're actually starting with a clean, green field, a green slate, pretty much?
Yeah, it's not, it's not pure green because we, we base it off the old plan. The old plan didn't really have the detailed goals and objectives that we could incorporate into the, the budget process. So we're kind of going back, redoing that and then move forward with the, the final product, which is the, the more detailed goals and objectives that, that we need to operate on.
But you've gone back and assessed.
Where we are.
Where we are and you're looking outside the envelope.
Correct.
To see if where we are is going in the right direction. And then you're starting way high and then going down, which.
Correct.
Which I think is great.
Correct.
Okay? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And then throughout the process, we're committed to more moral, ethical and prudent decision-making. As we work through the process, we focus on some very important principles and those include things such as making sure we're reaffirming our accreditation standards, following the accreditation standards with regard to budgeting and, and supporting our mission. We always work on strengthening recruitment and retention. We've done a great deal of work on that this year and that's going to be one of the focuses is making sure that we create sustainability in the programs that we've already established this year. Creating efficiencies while we minimize impacts to students. So every, many years, we'll, we'll, we'll look at different things. We've looked at things such as memberships and making sure we don't have four memberships in, in the same entity across the college. If we have one membership, it's for the whole college. We've done it with making sure that people are using the right resources. If we have a copy center, they should be using the copy center, not using their, their copier in their office. Those kinds of things. That's, we, we always focus on that from an operational standpoint, make sure we're not wasting money. We also development, develop dynamic and responsive budget scenarios so that we, we try to take into consideration all the potential future changes that may happen over the course of the year and try to plan for them best that we can. And last of all, we have to create a balanced budget. So in mid-March, the Joint Finance and Appropriations Committee voted on the general fund appropriation recommendations for the community colleges. For North Idaho College, our net increase this year was $459,900. That includes a small decrease for a change in benefit costs. That, that's a number that's based off of the state medical benefit plan and it's just passed on to us. There was $109,600 for a 1% change in employee compensation for regular employees. This $109,000 only covers about 40% of what we would need to do a 1% for the entire general fund population of employees. We received $443,500 for operational capacity enhancement. So what happened this year is the, the governor put a 3% cap on our request. So through the DFM, the Division of Financial Management, we could not request more than a total of a 3% increase over last year. And in order to retain flexibility in how we spend those dollars, most of the, most if not all of the community colleges asked for operational capacity enhancement. That was our line item. And we wanted the flexibility to use that money for whatever we deemed necessary to continue to build capacity, whether that's in salaries, if it's hiring a specific person for a specific role. However, that evolved. The original ask was much lower than this. JFAC, if you watch their actual budget setting process, they discussed the fact that the community colleges have not been able to raise tuition in over eight years. And we have not raised tuition in eight years and we are all facing pressure, wage pressure. So they gave us a little bit more of a bump. I think it was over, just over $120,000 that they gave us, more than what we had asked for in recognition of that. In addition, there was a second level of change in employee compensation, $219,000. Oddly not exactly double the first 1%, but, so essentially the state gave you, gave us a 3% increase. And then the last piece is the enrollment workload adjustment. And that's a number that's based on a three-year rolling average of our credit enrollments. So half the schools, half of the community colleges experienced a decrease in that line item and the other half experienced an increase. So we weren't the only decrease. So that, that adds up to the net $459,000. Questions about the JFAC numbers?
Okay, I have a question, but it's probably for Dr. Swain. You asked for money for certain programs, for IT and for nursing. Where did we come out on that?
Just like the driving course out at. The, the driving course got a lot of traction. The, no one was interested despite the fact that while we were down there, Cortlande was in the middle of a cyber attack. It didn't generate much interest at the, at the legislature to get support for cybersecurity or for the increase in nursing program.
Okay, so you're going to go back next year and?
We'll go back next year, yep.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't mind, I mean, it's, that is your bailiwick, but I was really excited about the Post Academy and talked to people all the way down into like Idaho County, et cetera, would want to use it. And people in, probably in Eastern Washington and.
Western Montana.
Western Montana. And, but it's money.
Yep.
That's the issue. So hopefully they'll, things will change. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
Some additional assumptions that we are moving forward with at this time is, is a 3% increase in, in salaries for full-time employees. That's based off of the JFAC funding of the 3%. That equals to a step, which is our longevity system, plus a 1% increase to the, to the base of our salary schedule. That is covered actually in full by the state if we use all of our operational capacity plus the change in employee compensation money that they gave us from the prior slide. So essentially the state is, can cover 100% of that, that's 3% change. The average premium increase for our employee health insurance, we were able to negotiate that down to a 5% average increase across the various plans that we have. That 5% increase in the premium will be shared between the college and the employees. No property tax increase is what I'm working with right now. We just got our valuations for the county for the current year. It, the valuation went up about $2 billion from last year. Our current levy rate is .038%, which equates to about $140,000 per year for a home that's valued at about $500,000. Just for reference.
You say that one more time, 149?
$140 a year for a home that's valued at $500,000.
Twelve bucks a month.
So I, we're also not budgeting for any tuition or fee increases this year. And then we all are budgeting for an increase in the grant and aid and travel costs for athletics as well as an assist, an additional full-time coach, assistant coach for soccer. So if you remember last year, we added a full-time assistant coach, one for the men's and women's soccer teams combined. And now we're, we're adding a second assistant coach so that there's a dedicated assistant coach for each of the men's teams and the women's teams in additional to the full-time coaches. And we also are moving forward with budgeting for a full-time athletic advisor. Due to the changes in the travel conditions and, and the makeup of our teams, we feel that, that they need more support from an academic standpoint. Yes, sir.
Sarah, are you're done with the page, right? So.
This page, yes.
Right, yeah. So I'm looking at the average premium increase of 5%. In terms of what I'm hearing in the media, that's really low.
It is.
I've heard like up to 25%.
Yes. We started at just over 10 and we were able to negotiate it down based on our experience rating and our history with the provider. The, each of our plans experienced different increases. So we're, we're trying to, to balance that out to the employees.
Right.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, and then my last slide is a slide that was requested and I apologize, it's small, it's hard to get. I didn't want to break it into two screens and I didn't want to, and I wanted to get it all in one place. So this slide was requested by Chair Wagner. And reflects the cost of the current and planned commitment to athletics for FY25. So it, it starts at the top with the current FY24 athletics budget as well as the current grant and aid budget, which was, is, because the timing of the decision, that budget is still based off of everyone being in NWA. So the current total athletic budget is about 2.2 million. So for FY25, we are increasing the grant and aid for two, for the students to buy 1.2 million so that we have the budget to cover the worst-case scenario of all athletes being out of. being out of, out of state or out of international. Books, we're budgeting based off the financial aid cost of attendance of $600 a year for books. Room and board is 1.28 million dollars. That's the equivalent of a double occupancy room in our residence hall, as well as a, an appropriate meal plan for student athletes. Lastly, there's athlete round-trip travel, which is allowed by NJCAA and we, we budgeted for that at $600 per student athlete. So that's another 91,000. So total additional direct athletic support for this year, based on what the board approved in the fall, is 2.7 million dollars. And that's the direct support to the athletes. In addition, we need to add travel, some additional money to travel because of where we're traveling. And that's after speaking with Sean, we came up with an additional 1.25 million dollars for travel costs. So our new athletic budget for FY '25 will be 6.2 million dollars.
Okay.
The other column is the column that shows what we were thinking originally when we recommended moving to NJCAA, which was scholarships that were not funded at the full out-of-state rate for all athletes. It was a 50-50 split. And then we were not proposing books, room and board, or the athletic round-trip travel. From what we have determined, to the best of our ability, based on the cooperation from other schools, other schools do not pay, provide full ride for all of those elements for all of their athletes.
So the dollars here are worst cases if everybody was getting it?
Absolutely, but we, I, I, I would strongly recommend that we budget for the worst-case scenario. That's the conservative thing to do.
Go ahead, Trustee Banducci.
Well, I understand the conservative approach of maximizing every line item for the highest potential cost. I will still like to point out that the grant and aid is a left-hand, right-hand. It's not real dollars. If I asked you to actually refund that or pay that, you guys can't do that. It's just from one column to the other. That's me putting a 13th person into a 12th person class. That's just, I put another person in the seat, but it's not actually costing me any more money. So the grant and aid is, is kind of a fake number. So I just want to point that out because that, that number jumped up there pretty high and it looks like another 800-plus thousand dollars, but that's not out-of-pocket cost. Grant and aid is, is funny money and, and we play with that and it'd almost be better if we just didn't. But I, I know from the accounting standpoint, you, you guys gotta go left-hand, right-hand in the columns, but I just want to point that out. That's not real dollars out of our pocket. That's just seats, that's just bottoms in the seat in a classroom, but we're already paying for the classroom. An instructor's already there, so there's no added cost to that instructor being in that classroom.
Right. What I was getting at was I'd heard there was a lot of money being involved spent on scholarships that nobody else in the league got.
Still people complaining about that motion. I think it's good to support students and their athletic students, make a massive commitment, time commitment, opportunity of cost commitment to be a part of North Idaho College's athletic teams. And I think this is a reciprocal commitment back to them. And referring to earlier discussions back in August, it was already discussion of moving it to excellent opportunities that we have at North Idaho College, like the 50th Wind Orchestra, that I've heard no progress made of how to support and advance and encourage healthy things at North Idaho College through basically, how did you describe it, Todd, as?
Trustee Banducci?
Well, there's some of the various extracurricular activities that can receive scholarships, everything from ASNEC to the Cheer Squad, to the pep band. And so there was a look at, at holistically looking at all those different activities and looking at what the scholarship mechanism or paradigm would be. And we did talk about that. In fact, there was some confusion whether we even had those things and of course, our pep band showed up at a couple games. We've not reinstated the Cheer Program that I think kind of disappeared with the whole COVID. And, and ASNEC, they've got their funding and I'm not sure if that needs to be supplemented or adjusted. So that was, that was, and I, and Mike, I'm trying to remember the exact term that I had for that.
Thoughts is budgets reflect priorities and students are the priority at North Idaho College.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at it in terms of other schools are not offering this, we are and it's costing us money.
Well, Mike, I will tell you that there's different answers from different people depending on how you ask.
Yeah, it's hard to get the same answer twice.
I can, I can explain to, I, I was confused by that.
You're not recognized. Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
If you want to attract the best athletes and be competitive, you have to have the best offering to students. And not many community colleges have a gorgeous beach on their campus. Not many, obviously not many, well, not all, I like how that's phrased, but we do offer many things that other colleges don't. A beach, a great environment, a supportive students that you come here, that your books, your call, your food, your housing are paid for, you get to do what you're best at. Sports, study, get the job done. We're here to support and encourage you.
Okay.
Mike, I believe the language I'd used previously was an extracurricular cohort and basically it was any group that's recruiting. So that, I think that's the terminology that I used previously that you were referring to.
Okay, well, it's a, it's judgment what you want to do. President Swain, do you want to comment?
Yeah, so to explain some of the difference in stories that you hear, at, at most the other, we're, we're gonna do it this, different because we're giving everyone a full-ride scholarship, so we don't have to apportion an amount to the athletic department for scholarships. Most other schools, they do that. So for example, going back to the 50-50 deal, they would say the basketball team's got 15 athletes and so they would budget 15 out-of-state, sorry, seven out-of-state scholarships and seven in-state scholarships and give that to a coach to manage. So if the coach then recruits all in-state students, they have extra money left over that they could pay room and board for. So if you ask a coach, they, they say they can support some room and board scholarships for their students because they got that extra money. If you ask the administration, how many scholarships they, what do they do for students? They'll, like I, I talked to the president of Utah, one of the Utah schools, and she said they give two room scholarships, no board, but two room scholarships to the men and two room scholarships to the women's basketball team. If you talk to coach, he's able to do a little better than that because of his management of the funds. But since we're giving scholarships, we're not giving dollars, we're giving scholarships to the, to the coaches so that they won't have that extra slush money to, to play with, but we're giving them the room and board anyway. So that's where you get some differences of opinion, but just if you, if you do the numbers, we've got 152 athletes by $6.5 million or $6.2 million, it's about $40,000 per student. We have employees that make less than that.
Which again, at least 800, sorry.
Go ahead.
A large number of that again, as I'll point out, the grant and aid is left-hand, right-hand, they're not actual dollars out of pocket. So that's a misrepresentation of, of those numbers. That was 1.2 million or something, if I remember on that screen. So subtract that off of there, please, if we're gonna be honest about how we're addressing the numbers out of pocket and what we're actually spending in actual dollars. That's a.
I think it's.
Misrepresentation.
Amazing, in the same.
Are, are you finished?
Yes, sir, I am.
In the same board meeting, we're talking about the increased crowds that's coming on campus thanks to the NJCAA participation and the same time we're complaining about there's, how much it costs, so it's.
Anything else?
It can't be, I wish I had the quote of another educator administrator, but basically, I'll paraphrase it, "It can't be underestimated the positive impacts of a healthy sports athletics department on a college campus." It brings people here. If we're here to vote for what we think is the best for North Idaho College, I'll gladly cast that vote.
Okay. Sarah, do you have anything else?
No, sir, I do not.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so budget assumptions.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, great job again. Let's see, so we have consent agenda with approving the Head Start Grant and then three policies.
Can we not have these first readings on the consent agenda? I'd like to discuss them.
You'd like to, go ahead, you'd like to do what?
Yeah, just, I, I would just like to just help understand, it's the first, it's the first reading. It's been a while since these things ever come before the board revised 2016. I would just like to see it communicated to the board. For, these are first readings on, we have a, have a board, we, basically there's a, just because we have been moving at a rapid pace this past year, second readings is fine to do and.
Right.
I think it's, having it on consent agenda, I would like to have tabs three, four, and five pulled off just to ask questions if we have any. I mean, I have one on.
Three, two, zero, two, five.
On tab four, so.
Okay, well, let's follow the, the process. We have, let's look at tab two, that's action approve Head Start Grant. I think we legally have to do that, do we not?
Correct.
So I'd like a motion to approve, if, if you're willing, action tab two, the Head Start Grant.
Seconded.
Any discussion? None seen. Aye, let's go ahead and vote, ayes?
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like we have four O, ayes, so we don't need to ask the nays. And then what you're saying is for, you wanted to make a motion to postpone, well, it's not really postpone.
Well, no, no, we're, we're just gonna, yeah, we're just gonna address them. I mean, we're just gonna have discussion, we have, somebody's gonna present them to us, explain what's going on.
Okay, so do we have someone to?
I mean, this is a first reading coming before the board, are we just supposed to?
We'll do that next meeting.
Rubber stamp, whatever.
We'll just pull those out and address those as new business next.
Do you want to postpone it then for one?
Hmm?
Go ahead.
No, I mean.
If I'm understanding, Trustee McKenzie, since he's recognizing these as a first reading, it sounds like what he'd like is at least just a brief explanation or, or narrative or something on what exactly we're doing with these three policies. So we've, tab three is policy 3.02.0, excuse me, 0.19. And so what, what was the rationale behind the update? What's, what are we doing with it?
Yeah, the basic job of the administration.
They're, they're all very minor changes, but if you want to get a presentation on them, I'm happy to do that.
So I, could I have a motion to postpone these three tabs till next time so we can, as a first reading?
I mean, Dr. Swain's name's next to him, I mean.
Are you recognizing me, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Oh, all right, thank you.
It's just.
Again, I'm not trying, I, I can't read, you know, I'm not trying to read Greg's mind here, I'm just listening to him, but it sounds like, can someone just briefly speak to these? Maybe that would be satisfactory. Do we need to postpone them or can we just have a little, little discussion on them maybe?
Yeah.
Sarah, you want to?
Okay, Sarah, can you fill us in?
Yeah, so, sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I did not prepare to have a lengthy discussion about these policies, but as we have been doing with many of our policies, these are all HR policies, is we have been reviewing them for accuracy as to current practice procedures and appropriate laws to make sure that, that our policies aren't, are accurate and also don't include a bunch of information that should really be in a procedure or actually even in an administrative guideline. So that, that's the background, that's as part of our ongoing process to make sure that we're evaluating and, and reviewing all of our policies in a rotation so that we don't end up with policies that are 20 years old.
Fair enough. Now, people may be wondering, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, people might be wondering why we even asked that question, because if anybody's interested, that's what the new policy looks like, which is, it's pretty short, that's pretty succinct. This was the old policy. And so we went from four pages where three of the pages are gone and most of the first page is gone, to just seven sentences. So just trying to understand how we went from three pages and spill over into a fourth page to seven sentences. So that's why we're just trying to understand, and it's me, he started off with the conversation, but that's a pretty significant update to that policy and just trying to understand what we were trying to accomplish there, because that's a pretty big change, so.
Part of the challenge, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Part of the challenge, trustees, is that policy is meant to stay at that high level and not have the details of the activity of how we go about executing on the policy. That's what the procedure is for. So that has been a consistent change in the policies that we have been working on in the last couple of years is to make sure that we're separating policy from procedure.
Just a comment.
So are we gonna be seeing the procedure at all?
Hang on.
Hold on.
Hang on. I've, I've got a question for you. What I'm seeing, when I read through it, is you'd put a lot of detail from day-to-day procedures in the policy. And it looks like you've made a decision to take the details out of the policy and then, and so that it would not, do you consider that to be more appropriate? It looks like that's a strategy on your part.
Chair Wagner, yes, that, that, that is the process. For instance, if we decided that HR was gonna do something that payroll used to do or vice versa, if it's in the policy, we can't do that unless we bring it back to the board. Whereas if it's in a procedure, we can do that internally and make those choices, those are operational decisions.
Right, and, and, hang on. And so to me, the question is, does the board need to be involved in exactly how people get paid and those types of things? And I have my own opinion on that, but the rest of the board might want to comment on that, because that's really what you're doing. You're, you're saying this is day-to-day housekeeping, we won't, we're not gonna put it in a policy and we'll just refer to the fact of how the policy is gonna be implemented, not the details.
And Chair Wagner, frankly, I have people on my staff and in the HR department who, this is what they do. And they know how to do it and they know how to do it right. So that's what we pay them to do. We, we ask that the policy be approved for the overarching process, not process, but the policy about how we do that. And then how we execute on it is up to the people who are reading the laws and paying, having to manage the process themselves.
Otherwise, if you have, if you have to change it due to a law change, technically you'd have to come back to the board.
Correct.
And go through that whole process again, even if it was something minor.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so as I read the old policy, basically voluntary deductions are kind of recognized, not necessarily. not necessarily how people are paid, but just which ones medical, dental, and life insurance. As I read the new policy, it just says, "We'll make all withholdings required by federal and state law. Voluntary deductions will be withheld upon appropriate authorization from the employee." So I guess- voluntary deduction. Is this- let me think of my question. The- like, for example, the flexible spending account contributions, like, does this policy-
Mr. Chair, if I may-
Go ahead.
If I may.
Sarah?
Trustee McKenzie, what we're trying to do with that is, say, in a more general term, voluntary deductions. So if we put flexible spending plan in the policy and it changes, we change the name of it from flexible spending plan to health savings account, we would have to change the policy. All we're trying to do is to say that we will continue to do the voluntary and required deductions and not list them out, so that we have the flexibility to add new ones as needed.
I have a question that may help clarify this. Sarah, and how long have you been in your role or the-
I have been managing the finance office of this institution for 22 years.
How many times has the Board come by and actually made changes to how you do business in that area?
Thankfully, never.
Never? Okay, go ahead.
I guess- I guess this might-
Hang on, trustee Banducci.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, but I'll try to be quick. Sarah, I- one of the things I thought we were going to try to do, and I think we have been doing, is that when we're looking at these procedures, you guys, as a courtesy to us, have been providing the accompanying procedures that actually implement those policies. And I would think that'd be tremendously helpful in these instances, when you're removing so much for the policy and generalizing it to such a degree where there's really not a lot on there. And the other two tabs, four and five, are not quite as condensed from three-plus pages to seven sentences, but they're both pretty significant-
Right.
Reductions, that if we could see what the policies were looking like with the accompanying procedure, that might be helpful for some context and to kind of see how that's being moved from the policy level to the procedure level. Because we were doing that, at least it seemed like it, for a while, we were getting some of the procedures that would go with the policies.
I can't speak to that at this time. I was not, as I said, I was not prepared to have this conversation this evening.
Fair enough. Second question. Who designates what holidays the college observes? What level does that determine what holidays we observe? Is it the Board of Trustees that actually has the ultimate authority as to what holidays? Because I'm imagining that you have a certain number built into the schedule, along with all the other days that are accounted for, and that there's a formula for that. So if we wanted to, say, start observing Veterans Day, we'd probably need to give something away. Or if we want to have the day off after Thanksgiving, there's got to be a give there with the take. Seems we've done some of that over the past, at least on the 11 years I've been on the Board.
Okay. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, that's part of the academic schedule, when the Board approves the academic schedule, the academic calendar, that's included in that with the holidays, the days that are going to be granted.
So the Board does have control over that.
The Board has approval.
I mean, it's really coming down to, to me, how much does the Board really need to be involved in this? If we need to be involved in some items, we need to be involved, but-
Chair Wagner, you keep saying that, but just to be clear, I mean, the Board hasn't been involved in this in nine years.
Go ahead.
I mean-
The Board approves the academic calendar every year.
We're talking about policy 3.02.19. This is payroll deductions.
Did you have something to say, trustee Banducci?
Oh, all I was gonna say is I was just trying to be refreshed in my memory exactly how that worked and how we were interacting on that process.
If I could just recommend-
Trustee McKenzie.
Uh, 3.02.19, I'm talking about payroll deductions, the clean version with accepted red line edits. If we could just add one more sentence, that when the policy- the procedure accompanying this policy is changed, that it's added as an informational item to the Board, not as something that even action on, that just like the Board-
You're saying you just want visibility of it?
Just want visibility. I mean, there's enough that happens at this college with the Board knowing nothing, so yes, I think taking it out of the policy and just having that according to policy is mainly just my concern.
I didn't catch the last part.
Is, yes, just having that one sentence, just saying that when the procedure from, you know, stemming from 3.2.0.19 changes, that it's just provided to the Board, you know, just this is what it changed from.
Sarah, do you have a comment on that?
I'm not the expert, but I believe if we do that, we- I would have to check to see if it would need to go back through Senate.
I don't think it's substantial.
I don't know, I don't know that how that-
We'd have to go back and look at it, it might be-
Go ahead, President Swain.
Is- sorry, clarification, I was saying, to be in the process of reviewing the procedure or after it's already been changed, and they have the procedure that we then get the chance to review, that makes sure that it represents-
No, just like-
Spirit and intent what we were hoping with the policy.
Okay, but the issue here-
Are you talking policy or procedure? Because we're not approving the procedure.
That's what I was- okay, I think they're thinking that you want to be involved in the development and approval of the procedure.
No, that-
I think what you're asking is to see the procedure after it's been completed, if it's been changed, as a sanity check for us to see that that still represents what our spirit and intent was with the policy, that the procedure accurately reflects the implementation of the policy as it was meant to be. Is that what you're saying?
That would be evident in itself by providing us the procedure, not for us to review, to just see how they've decided to operate themselves. But the policy that I'm referring to, in which people seem to think we need permission to add a sentence to the policy as proposed to us, and-
So you're- why don't you make a specific request? This is the first reader- reading, you can make it, and then we can go from there. The issue we're going to have is that this is a college policy that's already been run through a long process, so if we don't accept-
No, this is participatory governance, sir. So they are an advisory committee, they've advised, and we have taken that under consideration. We hear them, we appreciate that, and they've done great work, and we're going to add our final version to it.
Right. Go ahead.
Significant changes have to be gone, it has to go back to review by the Senate. I don't know that this necessarily constitutes a significant change, but I just want to clarify that if there is a significant change, part of that participatory government is to give the Senate another look at it for their input.
Right.
So I don't know that asking for a notification of change in the policy would actually constitute a substantive change.
You mean the procedure, sir.
Go ahead.
Change in the procedure.
Change in the policy.
No, no, wait a minute. He said change in the policy, but I think your point was if there was a change in the procedure, you wanted to see it, just have it brought back to the college, from the college-
I understand what-
Process to the trustee.
What he's proposing is a change to the policy that would say, if the procedure is changed, that we would be notified.
Okay, now, I was trying to understand you, and you were saying-
Hang on, guys, we're getting out of the process.
It's not a significant thing to say, the Board just wants to see the final product.
Yeah, he just wants a commitment on the policy that says, whenever the procedure changes, the Board wants to see it. Is that a problem to execute that, Sarah?
I will be happy to take that request and see what needs to be done in order to-
Because what I'm seeing here is, there was a large policy that contained a lot of procedure, we're making it to the place where it has no procedure in it, but if the procedure needs to be updated, we just want to see it.
Absolutely, I understand.
So you're 99% there, and hopefully that doesn't cause you a lot of work, and this is the first reading, so we're asking for that to be changed, and then you would come back with the second reading, right? We don't even need a motion.
Chair Wagner.
Go ahead.
On the website, under 3.02.19 payroll deductions, there doesn't appear to be a policy posted there associated with it, and so that may be where some of the confusion is stemming from.
Really?
Typically, there's a policy you can also download-
A procedure.
I'm sorry, a procedure there, and it's not listed on the website.
So that's the reason for that, if I may, is that the policy included all the procedures.
Yeah.
So it's not an accompanying procedure. Now we're breaking out and separating the policy from the procedure as is appropriate. And so that's part of the problem, some of these old policies, is they incorporated everything in the kitchen sink, and that's not appropriate. So we're taking out the policy element, separating that from the procedure, so there will be a procedure that is published.
And in the policy subcommittee, at least for the Board, we've been encouraging that kind of activity.
Correct.
Okay, so trustee Zimmerman, you've been over there.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So just to back up, so that I can have some clarity, there was no procedure, it was all in the body of the policy. Now, we've stripped out the procedure from the policy, and we've left intact, which is really just policy. All those contents are in a yet-to-be-developed procedure, or has it already been developed?
There is a procedure that has been developed.
And is it possible for, at the next meeting, to bring back a copy of that procedure, so we can see them both and how they work together?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, and I can give this to the Board Secretary, just the paragraph I'm requesting to be appended below, "The procedure stemming from this policy will be provided to the Board upon change." You don't have to include it in a Board Packet, just give it to the Board however you think, or notified.
Is that workable, Sarah?
We'll work with that.
Okay. Let's- she's-
That's okay, yeah, go ahead.
To clarify with trustee McKenzie, does this apply to all procedures, or just this specific procedure, when there's a change to a procedure? Just this one, or all of them?
From this policy.
Just the one.
That's what the wording says.
Just, so if there's a procedure that's attached to another policy, and that procedure changes, you don't want that procedure brought to the attention of the Board? So only in respect to this particular policy?
In my mind, employee benefits are, well, employee, it seems to have, in my mind, more financial impact than necessarily other policies. So I care about financial impact.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Go ahead.
Well, two things. I kind of like the direction where I think trustee Zimmerman was going, that while we're not involved in the process of procedure development, it never hurts to just be made aware when a procedure has been changed slash updated, just for transparency, if you will, and awareness for the Board, because again, the procedures implement the policies that we have approved and set. So it's not a bad idea for us to be aware of that. We're not getting into their- into the operational aspect of that, we're just being made aware, and information is usually not a bad thing. So, and the other thing, and I don't know if trustee Zimmerman was going this way, but Greg, I think it would need, sorry, trustee McKenzie, I think it probably needs to be in our Board Package, because I'd like the chance to review the procedure and look at it in context with the policy before I actually come to the meeting, so that if I do have questions, or is there anything that I want to address, I can do that. If I don't see it till I get here, or I get it differently, that's a hard one to, on the fly, in real time, analyze the policy and procedure together.
Let me, I have a question for Sarah, would that be all right?
No, can I just respond to that? Because what she's going to say is-
Hold on, hold on.
Hang on.
Just a second, just a second.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Would you please ask, repeat what you would like me to answer at this point?
Can I just-
So I can't.
Go ahead, trustee McKenzie.
So trustee Banducci-
Sorry.
I hear what you just said, and I agree with you. If, I think the problem isn't necessarily that it be provided to the Board, though, I think this specific policy, I would request that this one be provided to the Board. I think you're just looking for situational awareness, and so I've actually changed my next thing, that the procedure stemming from this policy will be provided to the Board upon change, and noticed on the next regular Board meeting on the agenda. You just want to know that it occurred. You can go to the website and download the procedure yourself, it's available, it's just half of the thing is procedures, policies, procedures change from interpretations of policies, and the Board's not aware. So I think that's addressing your concern, and that's minimizing the Board Packet impact, and it's communicating and providing transparency, yet operational impact very minor.
Are we all on the same square right now? I think we are. So we're, I think we're done with the first reading, and you'll come back with some information for next time, correct? Everybody agrees on that? There's no motion required, it's first reading.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just for my clarification, the request is to put the policies and the procedures in the Board Packet for next month, and to consider the request of trustee McKenzie to add the sentence, or at least evaluate whether that require- what that might require, if it requires any additional action on the part of the Senate. Is that accurate?
I think that's accurate, yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other further questions? No? Thank you very much, Sarah, again. Okay, so we're done with that, so now we're down to the minutes.
No, no, we're not. If holiday pay-
During court duty.
Okay, oh, you were just talking about the first, okay, the first one. Okay, then we'll go ahead and talk about holiday pay.
So I noticed the part for overtime holiday pay, in the event an employee works more than 40 hours during the week of a holiday, the employee will be titled to an overtime pay rate of 1.5 for all hours worked over 40, in addition to regular guidelines on holiday pay and time entry are published by payroll. Is that, is the guidance changing, or is that just providing the flexibility you're referring to?
It's providing the flexibility that I have been referring to, yes.
And the guidelines on holiday pay and time entry published by payroll, are those online for anyone to see, or is that in the NIC portal for only employees to know, or how is that?
I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head. I do know that it is in the employee portal, I do not know if it's available to the public.
Naturally.
Go ahead.
Sarah, just a quick question, are these examples of the few things that would be in the employee handbook that you would give to employees upon their hire, or something that's provided on an annual basis, that sort of thing?
Chair Wagner, trustee Banducci, we don't have a handbook per se, because it's all on the internet, so we have an HR page, we also have a Office of Finance page on the portal that tells people how to fill out a payment request, how to do a purchase order, and how to do their pay- time entry and their payroll rules.
So with our new and improved system, it's all working?
Electronic employee handbook, yes.
Okay.
Of sorts.
HR goes, if I'm right, Mike, if I'm right. HR goes over all this stuff when the employees are onboarded, so they know where to find it, and how to get to it, and how to access it, and who to ask if they got questions.
Sure, part of their normal onboarding, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, I guess my question for the next time this comes around for the second reading is, just how will the average citizen just know hall, I don't know, guidelines published by payroll? Just like, it's a simple, maybe they don't need to know, but if the answer is no, that's okay, I guess, just, that's my question, the next time we see this. Thank you.
Chair Wagner and trustee McKenzie, I have never seen that, I have not been able to access it on other people's websites, I do not believe it's necessary for the public, for that tab to be public access. I do not believe it's necessary for the public, for that tab, be public access.
Okay, are you finished then with tab four?
Tab four?
Any questions? Anybody else have questions on tab four?
I think, not necessarily for this one, so.
Nope. No questions on tab four or tab five?
No.
Okay, so are we finished with Sarah at this point?
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you again, sorry. Okay.
And chair? I do motion to postpone tabs six, seven and eight to the next regular meeting just to allow, just several contributions to be proposed in the next board packet. That's my motion.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. So go ahead and, discussion on it?
Okay. Okay, so stand by.
If I may, are you saying there's a number of things you'd like to see and you want to look at?
Yes.
And you need some additional time?
Yes. And I think we all just need to agree too on how we're gonna include the narrative portion. Because when people say it to be requested, sorry, I am looking for my notes that I wrote on it. Like, there's a good example right here. So following, trustee Corkel made the motion to accept all prior meetings as they were originally submitted. The motion was seconded for discussion by trustee Zimmerman. I don't think we need for discussion. We just, basically, the motion was seconded by trustee Zimmerman. Following a detailed discussion, trustee Corkel repeated his motion and further stated that when minutes are recorded, whether they are amended or not, they do not become a legal document. So he requested that the statement be reflected in the minutes. Without further discussion, chair Wagner called for a roll call vote, the motion failed. So I just don't feel that the minutes need the part, it's our first time doing this. And I think he requested that the statement be reflected in the minutes. I just don't think that part needs to be in there. Because it's, what he requested to be in there is included in there. We don't need that part. And then, it's just, it's several times in there. Like, when I was referring to myself, trustee McKenzie asked to make a statement on the record. He said that the four trustees have been present for forty-seven minutes from the start of the meeting time, but a quorum could not be established until chair Wagner arrived, even though the chair requested that the meeting start in his absence as he was headed to the meeting. So he said he is making this statement to provide clarity as to why the meeting was late to start.
So you're...
We don't, we don't need narrative, it's facts. I looked at our goal.
You would like to take a look at it and submit a proposal?
Yes, sir.
Next time? And you've asked for a postpone for one month?
One, to the next regular board meeting. And that mine proposes get into the board packet, just like the process that we've set up. And...
Okay, does...
But there's also, I took one more picture, if you give me a moment, I do. Because when we had the special meeting, because I remember it quite differently. The meetings say, where did my phone get to? Okay, if you, give me time to find, basically, if we're gonna come to the board meeting with proposed changes, it's not gonna be included in the board packets. And I remember it quite the opposite. And so I was just wondering how everyone else remembers it. It's February twenty-one. When did we talk about the, provide a summary of accomplishments achieved? May I ask, the summary, discuss the power of the board meeting? I'm sorry, I have a picture of it if somebody calls my phone.
So what do you, what do you want to do?
My question, hold on.
What we did last time?
We're just gonna postpone and then I'm gonna get my proposed changes into the meeting minutes. But my question is, in here, it says that we're gonna come to the board meeting and that we're gonna read our changes. If we can get our proposed changes into the board packet, that's what we're going to do. Like, that was the conclusion at the last board meeting? Because that's what I did in January. And then I wasn't allowed to distribute things at the board meeting because we were gonna read and all like that. So it was like, what we agreed to at the last one is different than, so I'm just asking, like, in here...
So are you asking to be able to put...
Your phone went immediately to message.
Oh, well, that's good.
You're asking to... Hang on just a minute.
Chair Wagner.
Okay, so...
I have it right here.
It's page two.
Page, you found it?
Page two of February.
Yeah, corrections to minutes on the consent agenda should be made during the meeting and read in public, not included in the board packet. The board should then whether, vote on whether to accept the minutes as corrected. I mean, if it's, like, if we, people miss a whole page or something and somebody feels that that's appropriate...
That's, there are two steps. That's what we want to get to. But what we're doing right now, when we're getting used to the process and making substantial changes, you would make your proposed changes, give them to Dr. Swain, to the staff ahead of time, at least like a week ahead of time before the meeting. We'll get it in the board packet, get it on the website. People can look at it.
That's, that's exactly how I remember it too, but that's not how this reads. So corrections to the minutes on the consent agenda should be made during the meeting and read in public, not included in the board packet.
Yes, but we're doing it in two steps because we're not there yet. That's the ultimate goal. So for next meeting, you need to get your proposed changes to Kristen or Suzie a week ahead of time so that she can put it...
Two weeks, two weeks.
What's that?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ahead of time? You want it two weeks ahead of time? Okay.
Well, yeah, that's for stuff to go into the board packet, not necessarily agenda items. So, but this is describing like the ideal process that we're all agreeing to.
That's the ideal process.
No, but, and, and so...
Not where we are right now.
Not where we are right now. But I'm saying, the minutes reflect contrary to the ideal process of what we're trying to get to. We're trying to get to the ideal process that you're talking to. And the minutes say that we all agreed to the not ideal process.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I'll propose the changes, we'll get them into the board packet, and then, then I'll be able to speak more directly once it's in the board packet. I'm sorry, it's not in this board packet.
Okay.
And appreciate the timely delivery of the minutes. I've been enjoying that and it's been a rough couple of weeks. So I see the team doing a good job back there and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You don't have any comments, Terry?
No.
Okay, you're kind of hidden behind Dr. Swain and I don't know sometimes whether you...
Thank you.
I don't want to make sure you're covered. Dr. Swain, you want to talk about?
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate that when substantive changes are proposed, they should be redlined and submitted as proposed changes so that everybody can see the difference between what Suzie has submitted and the recommended changes. So that there's, it's very clear where those changes are coming from. And that allows the trustees to go back and look at those. If they want to review the video or whatever, to make sure that it is accurate. And I think that was, that was some of the issues that came up last time is that there was an effort to submit them without being redlined. And that, particularly when we were looking at minutes that went back to October, it was very difficult for folks to, if we had submitted those without redlines, it was very difficult for folks to go back to October and realize where the changes had been made. So if there are substantive changes to the minutes, they need to be redlined and then we can include them with the original minutes so that people can compare with what Suzie submitted as a board clerk and what the trustees...
Were you not aware that that's what I was handing out at the board?
Well, that's different, handing things out at the board meeting. We don't want to have substantive changes handed out at the board meeting and then asking people to read and review and approve those at the board meeting. That's the, that was the issue on that one.
Okay, everybody is starting to talk over each other again, so we need to...
I didn't say anything.
Let me control the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Zimmerman, were you trying to refer to something? I thought I was catching you talking about tab six, page two. Was there something there you were trying to point out or was I in the wrong spot?
I just found that's what trustee McKenzie was trying to find. And I was just trying to alert you guys of that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any further discussion? Okay, we go for the vote? Ayes to postpone?
Postpone to the next regular board meeting, aye.
Aye.
No nays? Did you, trustee Zimmerman, did you...
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain? We have one abstain. We have three ayes, the motion passes, we postpone till next time.
So let's make sure that Suzie has that motion recorded correctly.
Right. Do I need to restate the motion?
Can I have it? It's very simple, I just have the motion to...
Yeah, it's, it's...
Postpone tabs six, seven and eight until the next regular board meeting.
Correct.
To allow proposed changes to be included in the board packet.
Okay.
Okay, do we have that?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, so moving on, we are ready for the final, I think here, yeah, the final step. Publish com, a public comment. I'm gonna reread my little statement here. You see what's on the agenda? And I'm just gonna reread this. Hang on just a minute. The NIC board values hearing the views and opinions of the public on agenda topics and will listen carefully and take this input into consideration when making decisions. As a general rule, trustees will not respond to public comment. All public comments should be directed to the board chair, please. The board recognizes the rights of citizens to express critical comments about the board. However, attacks on individual board members are not acceptable. In addition, the public does not have the right to comment on personnel issues or disrupt the meeting of the board. The board chair has the discretion to interrupt a speaker in the event the individual's remarks address personal matters or are disruptive. The board will take comment on agenda items from members of the public who attend in person and commenters will be limited to two persons, minutes per person, with no giving of time to others. A sign-up sheet will be provided, which I have here. And no advance request for public comment will be accepted. Remarks are subject to NIC policy two dot zero one oh three. And that's all on the website. Okay, so Karen, you're up.
Good evening, my name's Karen Schuppler. I listed public comment to start with because public comment has now been moved to the end of the meeting. And no one's really sure why. Because we have to keep our comments related to this agenda. So moving it to the end removes the ability of the public to say anything about what's going on before it's voted on. That being said, I do have a couple of comments about what we saw this evening. I'm curious on why we would be changing a policy to put more procedure in it that could be easily fixed by, I don't know, a report from the technology department that says, hey, this procedure's been updated on X date. Go look it up. I'm pretty sure that could be pretty easily handled by our esteemed technology department. And I would like to say thank you to Suzie. I know that there's been a lot of stuff going on. I know it's supposed to be only to Mr. Wagner. But thank you, Suzie, for all your work in working through these minutes. I know it's been a difficult road dealing with that. The last thing, Mr. Wagner, I think you have to give me a little bit of grace here because I'm not sure how to handle this. But there's two signs at the end of your table that are promoting violence. And I don't know how to address that in this forum in an appropriate and nonjudgmental way without calling out specific people for their behavior. So I think I will leave it with the two signs at the end of your table are asking specifically for violence against individuals. And if I would go a moment further, I would point out verse nineteen of that psalm, which says that people hate you for no reason. And I think the behavior by that individual over the course of the last year has given lots of people reason. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Thank you. Jamie Beruba?
Thank you, my name is Jamie Burby. And I'd like to thank trustee Zimmerman and trustee Corkel for not signing the civil, civility resolution. And a couple of reasons are, is political persuasion still does not belong in that resolution as an identifier of any group. And if you're gonna do that, you need to include the other groups that I mentioned last month. So thank you for doing that. Besides that, as Karen said, actions speak louder than words. And the actions of some of the members of this board have not been civil. Secondly, Suzie, I'm gonna thank you as well. I'm an admin, I know how hard it is to do minutes and especially when this is so confusing. And as trustee Zimmerman had pointed out at the special meeting, this is self-serving. Some of it is not all factual, you can look it up on the video. And you have a really tough job. And I hope the NWCCU will give you some good coaching so that we can just have what it is, what we're being voted on, and not have this as a legal interpretation like some people would like to see. Just get the business done, because this is a waste of time. And then I would also like to say, thank Sarah Garcia for her watching over what our deductions are and things like that. I trust that the financial aid office and HR knows what they're doing with my deductions and my payroll. And frankly, it is a big slap in the face when you want to give athletes more than what people make at this college and take away benefits. That's how it felt tonight when I was hearing that discussion. That you want to take away benefits that we have now because you want to micromanage it. So think about that.
Thank you.
From the symphony that already spoke. I think she misunderstood and thought she had to sign in there.
Okay, and so we have Robert Schuppler.
Thank you, Chairman Wagner. My name is Robert Schuppler and I'd like to speak a little bit about the accreditation issues that the college is struggling with still. The initial report from the NWCCU addressed multiple points of non-compliance. And that report is now almost a year old. And yet, several points of it have not been addressed. There's been failure to address letters of no confidence between the staff and the faculty and the student union, all with the board. The updates that have come from the NCW, NC, NWCCU have all talked about the dysfunction with the college is primarily on the board. And part of their corrective actions include some trainings that are happening and we're not getting full participation on the board. We can watch the trainings online. It's evident that certain people are choosing not to participate. And that's not a positive action for the board. It's a bad look. There's been a lot of talk about the civil discussion procedure. And last time I spoke about some consequences for not following it. What I think some of the board may not understand is that the community has the right and the ability and the accountability to hold our board and elected members accountable for their actions, whether they're good or bad. And we praise when it's appropriate and we call out when it's inappropriate. And some people have a thinner skin than others on the ways of that praise. And calling them out is, it hurts them, it causes them issues. You know, we're not gonna agree on everything. It's become a political board and it shouldn't be. It is what is best for the community and what is best for the college. And I urge the board... And I urge the board to get back to that basic business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the list I have for public comment. I think we're done.
Is it possible if you add in, uh, putting that on the list?
Uh, no, you have to do it before the meeting, sorry. So we are now adjourned.